Junior at Saint Walden Missionary Baptist Church. Pledge allegiance by Commissioner Newsom, please stand. Pastor, I would like you and everyone to, the chief's mother is very sick and we'd like to add her to our prayers. We have, all have family with illness, so, you know, it's, life is challenging enough, but when you're going through that with your family, it's difficult. So, please add the chief and his family to all your prayers. Thank you. Roll call, I'm proud to say everyone is here. Item number four, I need approval of the previous minutes. All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number five, communications from the mayor and city commission. We do have one proclamation. All right, I'd like Todd McDonald and Maurice Head come down. Our proclamation, Community Development Block Grant Month. Hi, guys. Come on down. Whereas on August 22nd, 1974, President Gerald Ford signed a law creating of HUD's Hallmark Programs, the Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas Community Development Block Grant Program is a partnership of federal, state, local government, as well as private sector, nonprofit, and our community as well. Whereas 1989, the city of Dothen received a total, since 1989, the city of Dothen has received a total of $16,590,637 in the Community Development Block Grant Funds, which has resulted in significant contributions to the development of low and moderate income areas. Whereas this year, we will celebrate 40 years of success on the Community Development Block Grant Program. So therefore, I, Mike Schmitz, Mayor of the great city of Dothen, do hereby proclaim August 2014 as Community Development Block Grant Month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This fortieth anniversary celebration is happening all over the country. It isn't just in Dothen. And as you mentioned, we've received over $16.5 million since we became eligible 25 years ago. Over the years, Community Development Block Grant Funds have been an important part of funding various economic development projects, public facilities projects, and housing improvement projects that primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, households, and areas in Dothen. Since the creation of the Community Development Advisory Board, the projects and programs that have been selected by members, have been selected by members of the community, this fair, impartial, and need-based approach has become a model for other communities across the country. I want to thank you for supporting this process, Mayor and commissioners, and allowing Maurice and myself to be part of it, and look forward to celebrating the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program.
I have two items, Mayor. Have a neighborhood cleanup on August 30th over a location on Lake Street. We're gonna start at the intersection of Rain Street and go all the way down Lake Street, ending it on Allen Street, just gonna clean up the community on that particular area. Also, number two, I'd like to thank the USDA amongst with Reverend Robinson of Alabama Avenue, over on Alabama Avenue, they took, they spearheaded that program that was funded through the USDA where they're gonna feed over 50,000 kids in the city of Dothen. It's real big. They just needed a site, they furnished the food, so no child in Dothen will go hungry for supper now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
City manager.
Yes, sir.
The crossing on Newton Street and the Bayline Railroad is in terrible condition. Many of the tires are rotted, and there are big holes between the pay cement and the rails. See if you can get them, take a look at that.
Yes, sir. We'll touch base with them, see if we can get them out there to fix that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I know you don't like surprises, but I wanna surprise you this morning with something. Most of you probably saw on the front page of the paper a few days ago about the article on the front page about Grove Dothen. I wanna do something this morning to, on my part. Dothen's been great for me. I've raised a family here, I've had a good career here. Been here since 1969, been in business myself since 86. Dothen's my home, I wasn't born here, I'm born close by in Cottonwood. But I'm gonna give a check this morning to help Grove Dothen. That article in the paper was about that. It opens it up to all of us to contribute. I think this commission and the mayor work hard, we try to do what we're supposed to with your money and look after it. I made a check for $500, $566. I'll be 66 years old Saturday, so I made a $566. I'm gonna challenge the community out here to help, let's do this. I've asked the mayor several times, talked about creating a fund and let the public contribute to it. So Mayor, I'm gonna give you a check for $566 to help with economic development, Grove Dothen.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Now, I wish you were 100 years old, we would've gotten more money.
Nothing, Mayor.
I have nothing, Mike. None, Mayor.
All right, so before the September 1 holiday, I wanted to remind everybody early, we'll put out a press release, we'll put out information in the paper, we'll run an ad, but September 1 is Labor Day. It's a holiday, which is a Monday, and garbage and recycling will be picked up on Wednesday. So if your pickup is on Monday, it'll be picked on Wednesday, and there will be no yard trash pick up, picked up on Monday, because it is a city holiday. Second item is, it's, we have a good problem to have. We have cast and crowns coming to town on Friday, August 22nd, and it is sold out, which is good. We also, the yard party has been restructured to include two days, and so they're gonna start on Friday night, which means there's gonna be a lot of activity downtown. That's the good part. So what we're doing is asking everybody's patient with dealing with the parking issues. You know, we have parking issues several times a year, and so patients, the police department is already working with the museum staff and our staff, they will be on hand, they will do that. So, asking everybody's patient, and remember, when we started growing downtown and working on it, this is what we wanted. We wanted to have a parking problem, so that's good. Also, we got three upcoming events in the civic center. Trying to get a little publicity out. On September 13, Bamin Baral is coming back, a boxing, it'll be in the civic center, and again, we need to get the word out, get a lot of support for that, and hopefully that'll be able to be successful. On September 6, James Gregory is coming. He is being sponsored as a fundraiser for the American Legion, and he will be in the Opera House. Again, it is a fundraiser for the American Legion. And then, while I don't remember the exact date, for next April, we've already got book, Celtic Woman. It's not Women, it's Celtic Woman. And this guy has brought, he's brought such shows as Cats, and Lord of the Dance, and Riverdance. So, you know, it is, for those people who watch PBS, it's a very popular program on theirs, and hopefully it'll draw well. And then finally, and not least, on September 17, everybody get out your calendars, mark this down, we're gonna have our Wiregrass Economic Resources Summit. And this has been restructured. It's actually gonna be a lot of fun, it's only gonna be a half a day this year, from 7:30 to 12:30, but I think it's a lot of fun, and some lucky person who submits a business plan is gonna walk away with, Dean, $1,000, right? $1,000 toward their business. So this is great for the city of Dothen, and a great opportunity for all of us to participate in the future economic development initiatives in our community. That concludes my remarks.
Thanks. Celtic Woman. So that means we can only afford one woman?
That's right.
Well, most men understand that. All right, we now have no communications from the city clerk. Item number eight, public hearing regarding the abatement removal of noxious or dangerous weeds. Is, at this point, anyone who wishes to speak? Going once? Going twice? This public hearing is now closed, thank you. Item number nine, resolution number 2014-213, declaring certain properties which are overgrown with weed, scrub, wild bushes, grass, and other vegetable growth as injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as nuisances, and calling for a public hearing to be held on the matter during the regularly scheduled commission meeting September 16, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 10, resolution number 2014-214, declaring certain properties which are overgrown with weed, scrub, wild bushes, grass, and other vegetable growth as injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as nuisances, and ordering that properties be abated?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 11, resolution number 2014-215, assessing properties for the cost of demolition of substandard structures and turning the amounts over to the county tax collector to be added to the next regular bills for taxes levied against the respective lots and/or parcels of land. Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 12, resolution number 2014-216, approving and adopting the updated City of Dothen Solid Waste Management Plan, which will serve as the basis of solid waste management with the city of Dothen for a 10-year planning period beginning January 2015.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Can we put the plan on the front of the webpage?
Yes, sir, we can put that on the website. And we did hold a public hearing on that also, some of you came.
Concern here, city manager, this may require additional work on the part of the police force, because people will probably be calling them as based on this plan. Is that gonna necessitate additional personnel?
We don't think so, because initially, when there's a complaint like that, we try to handle that with the environmental services staff, and then if all else fails, then the police becomes involved. So, it's not really a change from what we currently do.
Well, I, you know, I noted here, and we may have a lot of the citizens calling directly to the police department for this, and I know in my area, particularly in the eastern part of the city along Drew Road and Husky Road, particularly Drew Road, there's a lot of dumps that goes on out there, and I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I, this kinda indirectly related to the solid waste management plan. I'm not, I haven't talked to the other commissioners, and I haven't talked with you, but to go along with what Commissioner Newsom said, I mean, would it be possible to establish a phone number just for the purpose of reporting hazardous waste? I mean, if citizens were to think that they would come across hazardous waste, and such as what occurred in Messy Creek, or whatever, they could call that number.
Quite sure we can. It's a good idea.
I guess it's good. I'm not sure the state doesn't have a total freedom to report hazardous waste, since they're actually controlled by ADM. Let us check into that.
I would think that would, that would be, could be part of our compliance or something.
I think it would be a good idea. Thank you, sir.
I mean, I'm not sure how the state and federal agencies monitor their lines, but I mean, I would feel like we would do adequate.
You know, most of the time when we currently suspect hazardous waste, actually Larry Williams' guys respond, their hazmat team is the response to that. But you're talking about how you report it, and right now, I guess Larry, they're calling 911, aren't they?
Yes, sir. Any hazardous waste, or they can contact a local emergency management agency, Dothen Houstie County EMA, and they can get the ball rolling on any of what I would consider more complaint-driven chronic problems. You know, if it's a, if it's an emergency that's happening, 911, of course, but if it's something chronic, I'd go through the regular resources of Mr. Corbin, and then EMA, if they feel like that is something that's gonna be harmful, they can bring in ADM, EPA, and if sent a waterway, it brings it to another level, you know what I'm saying? So, that is the best route, is through EMA.
But anyway, let us look at that, and per y'all, and, you know, something to let you know how we're gonna do that. But like I said, typically Jerry doesn't have the ability to handle hazardous waste, and Larry's the one that, his group is the one that, you know, does that, knows how to dispose of it.
Well, I'm not talking about handling, I'm talking about reporting.
Right, I understand. But, anyway, let us, let us think through that. And it may not be a bad idea to have a phone number just dedicated for that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 13, resolution number 2014-217, approving the plans for improvements to SR-210 Ross Clark Circle from Portner Street to Baum and Drive prepared by the Alabama Department of Transportation.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Can those be available at the top of the webpage?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can those plans be made available on our webpage?
Charles, you think you can get those in a JPG format, that we can put them on our site, website?
That's a large set, I think we could possibly look at, you know, some of the pages, but I would think that the documents are very large.
Huge.
Yeah. As far as the detail, every detail of the plans, but.
I think the key is timing, and maybe any inconvenience that folks are familiar with.
They probably have a summary page, do they not?
They've got, they just go from utility sheets, asphalt sheet, I mean, there's just various sheets.
They don't have a general, just.
But I think what they're talking about is, once construction starts and things are being done out there, the notification they should handle, and we can handle, working with the public as far as.
So all the rideaways been parked?
Detours, I think. Yeah, yeah, the rideaways, there, 200 to 200.
Yeah, they already own that, right?
Right, yes, sir.
So when will they, when are they predicting construction to begin?
The letting is September, but I would think that's gonna put it late, late this, you know, calendar year even starting any work, I would think, in November, December.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 14, resolution number 2014-218, entering into a contract awarding the bid, issuing a notice to proceed to H&amp;L Construction for the Jackson Circle Culvert Improvements project in the amount of $290,433.
Motion to approve.
And this is an area that only has one entrance, in and out, and that culvert's pretty bad, so this is really a safety issue, to be able to get people in and out, and emergency vehicles in and out.
Good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 15, resolution number 2014-219, approving the utilization of Caesar funds to pay various allowable expenditures for the police department operation in the amount of $12,821 appropriating funds for said expenditures. Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 16, resolution number 2014-220, amending resolution number 2013-431 with the U.S. Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service to accept an additional $1,000 for reimbursement for overtime expenses related to the support of Gulf Coast Regional Fugitive Task Force.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 17, resolution number 2014-221, entering into an incentive agreement, United Parcel Service.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 18, resolution number 2014-222, entering in a contract with Southeast Alabama Basketball Officials Association to provide certified referees to officiate during the Downtown Hoops Classic Basketball Tournament at a cost of $105 per game.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 19, resolution number 2014-223, entering into agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors for the sponsorship of the Dothen Leisure Services Youth Fishing Day.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, certainly appreciate Academy sponsoring this. I'm just, I'm wondering why big conglomerates like Coca-Cola, that seem to be making a lot of money, can't sponsor more of our local events, especially in our civic center area. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 20, resolution number 2014-224, appointing Ed Vaughn as the member of the board of zoning adjustment. Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Mr. Vaughn, is Mr. Vaughn in here today?
No, sir, he is not. Any other discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 21, resolution number 2014-225, approving payments of invoices for the month of July 2014, the amount of $12,961,935 and 14 cents.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 22, resolution number 2014-226, awarding bids and approving purchase of over $15,000 by the city.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I noticed there are a lot of local vendors on these purchases. I'm certainly grateful for that. I think the citizens provide us with the resources to make these purchases, and are probably happy about that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. Item number 23, resolution number 2014-227, approving advanced travel requests from the city employees.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay.
First and only item that I have on the administrative agenda is approval of the minutes from August 5, 2005.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say yea. Oppose, say nay. We have one privilege of the floor, Ms. Valerie Harris.
I'll try not to talk long. I know it'll be the last time I see all of you probably together for a while, but I did wanna come and say a few words about the lump sum benefit that this commission has decided not to approve or even bring up to the floor, so to speak. But what I really wanna talk about is how sorry I am. Sorry that this conversation ended up being about, is the glass half full, or is the glass half empty? And it's all been about the half-empty part. I'm sorry that this all entered, a whole discussion about the $120 million, that's the unfunded balance. And then, the other side of that, the part that's still half-full, is the $40 million that was added to the bucket that we pay our retirees out of. So, let me see, we have $40 million that we added over 10 years, that averages out to $4 million a year. $120 million that we still owe, let's see, amortization is 30 years. It's online, it's in the report. 30 years, $120 million, averages out to $4 million a year. We're on track. We're on the same track that the actuary for RSA says we're where we're supposed to And in spite of all this, the 2004 wages and the 2013 wages have gone up. I mean, let's, let's be real. They've gone up. I mean, that's, that's part of the deal, it's wages go up every year. So in spite of all of that, your contribution rate went down. Okay, part of that was because employees picked up part of the tab. But the other part was that you're still making progress toward paying this pension deficit. Even though you're raising payroll, you still have been going ahead and paying it But what I'm most sorry about is that I haven't been able to get across to you to appreciate these retirees. That's probably the thing I'm most sorry about. These retirees would've just gotten, on average, $600 for a 25-year retiree, $300 for a widow. Well, that's not a whole lot of money. It was more a question of, could the city afford it? Well, of course the city could afford it. You just went ahead and approved $15 million for recreation, and we don't even know what the payroll cost of that will be. So, it's not a question about the money. I've said that every single time I think I've been up here. It's a, that isn't the question. It's not a question about whether or not you can afford it. Do you absolutely don't want to spend any more money on pension because it's a big sum of money? Certainly. I totally understand that. But it really isn't about the money. What I found from retirees, as I spoke with them, they had some pretty harsh words. They described their feelings as if they felt like they were being punished. They were the ones that voted to go to it, and they felt like they were being punished. They felt unappreciated, okay, I get that. They felt like they were scapegoats for decisions that were made in the past by people they didn't even know. I know that all seven of you are fine men, that you want to do the best thing. Just know that the retirees out there don't necessarily feel the same way. They feel more like what the county felt like. Mark Culver said recently that this was a vote to approve, he made comments that it was to appreciate the retirees, and to let employees know how they would be treated when they retired. We want to get to that point. We really want to. Retirees served the city doing jobs most in this community would not want to do. Most people don't want to be firemen and police officers, they don't want to work on a street crew, they don't want to clean ditches, they don't want to climb up poles and deal with hot wires. Most people don't want to do that. They didn't make great salaries, other than the very top of this organization, every organization has their 1%, this organization has its, their 1%. They don't make, they don't have big investment accounts. I've talked to these people on the phone. They don't have multiple houses, they don't have beach condos, they don't have acreage. What they have is their city retirement and generally social security. If it weren't for the state, the city retirement, a lot of these people would only have social security. I've had a couple of people say, well, I've worked all my life and I don't get a check. Funny that the two people that have said that to me are people with vast wealth, are people with lots of acreage, there are people that have a condo at the beach, you know, that they live in a very nice house. The vast majority of retirees don't fall into that category. Sure, there are some. I'm not saying there aren't. But we're not getting lavish wealth from this. In the end, we hope that in the future, we can work together, we want to get rid of the misconceptions about the plan and about our retirees. As a group, we're disappointed. Our families are disappointed, our immediate family and extended families are disappointed. But we are going to go ahead, and we're going to thank you. I know you may say, well, why, why is she gonna thank us? Because what you've done here is you've allowed a bunch of retirees scattered all over this community to come together as a group. And one of the things we will do is we will meet periodically, we will offer you to come, we will have, we will try to get people from RSA to come down and talk to us about our plan. This is our plan, we should be able to get information about our own plan. They've reconnected with people. People said, oh, you know, I'd really like to see him, I haven't seen him in 20 years. You've made us a group. Some of them came today, some of them, I told them that you weren't going to vote for this, and some people called. Poor Sarah probably got a bunch of calls, I think. There were people that talked to you, there were people that left messages, they called you and asked you to reconsider. So we've all reconnected, we plan to meet periodically, and we hope that we become better educated about our plan. We hope that you will join us, and we will work together for a lot more information and a better path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We're about to adjourn, but I, I don't want to debate, and I appreciate you. To say we don't appreciate our employees is absolutely not true. No, I don't want to debate, it's my turn, thank you. But you sort of proved some of the facts that we've talked about. When you said in the last 10 years, we moved up $40 million? We pay over $9 or $10 million a year into this retirement fund. We're only 42% funded. We are definitely worried about giving the promise, or fulfilling the promise we have to you and to you about making sure there is a retirement. You may not be concerned about the $122 million. I am. I'm concerned about the future, and I'm concerned about doing what we promised, and that is our promise. And I do agree, there's a lot of misunderstanding. I do agree, as the commissioner said, we need RSA, and we want to be part of the process. I do agree, as the commissioner said, we need RSA, and we want to be part of the process. We were not part of this process, and in the future, I would like to be. So we do love you. We do appreciate you. Do you, do you deserve a bonus? Of course. Everybody feels they deserve a bonus. But I think our number one commitment is to make sure we do what we promised, and that's fulfill the promise of making sure you have a retirement, and making sure that we do it in such a way that we can reinvest back into our community. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we're going to continue to do it. So I look forward to coming to your meeting, and I look forward to hearing what you all have to say. So at this point, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.